I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Hines.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Trustee Marasek.
Here.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Thank you, acting clerk Jeff Soho.
There's a stipend for that, right?
I'm surprised Youngerman's not here to gloat. He's not here to gloat? Ohio wins and he's not going to gloat?
He's still on Ohio State.
Yeah.
Celebrating.
All right.
We've been at gallery, enjoyed that.
We'll move on to more important business, public participation. If there's anybody here tonight that wants to address the board, I can go through my spiel, but you guys have both heard it, and you don't plan on talking, I can tell by your shaking heads. So with that, we'll move on to items for discussion. The first one we have is changes to the liquor license categories, and I'll ask Jeff for a summary of this one.
Thank you. This is based on previous discussion of the board. So in your packet, we had a few things. We had the current Class G language, and then we had two alternate languages, either for Class G or a new proposed P. We can have that discussion on where we think those belong. And then we also provided a spreadsheet that showed the food and beverage sales of the current restaurants, as well as the gaming information we have, just so you could see what, if any, effect it would, changes would have on the current businesses. From looking at it, whatever you decide to do should not affect the current businesses, because the amount of food sales are so far in excess of the other. So, but we just wanted to check on that, so you would have that information. And with that, I will probably ask attorney Anderson to discuss the language changes.
Thank you. What we've done is we've outlined three different options, if you will. The first is to essentially leave Class G, and Class G, by the way, is restaurant licenses. That's probably the easier way to refer to it. Leave Class G the way it has currently been utilized. And the reason I say that is the language that is in the ordinance right now is not exactly how we have applied it, or if you will, left a question. And that question was, what do we do with things that aren't food or liquor? And right now, the way the accounting has been done is it's been food and liquor, and anything else wasn't counted. So if you sold T-shirts, you know, souvenir T-shirts, those weren't calculated into that mix. Now, as Jeff pointed out, the percentage that's food in all our restaurant licenses is so dramatically high that it has never been an issue. They've always well exceeded the 50 percent. So option number one is just to do a minor thing, which is just to amend the language to reflect the current practice, which is to say there's food, there's liquor, and then there's everything else down here that doesn't count in the overall percentage. That's option number one. Option number two is to change the Class G, the restaurant license, to provide that the other stuff, so to speak, the T-shirts, and in most cases, what we're talking about is video gaming, that that be included in one of the 250 percents. And so the draft alternate language would be to take food and gaming and include that in the one percentage, and liquor in the other. So you could have 50 percent liquor, but then food and gaming and T-shirt sales, that's just my example, all have to fit in the other category. So that's an option for you. The other option is to go the other way, and that's Class P. Now, we can create multiple classes, or we can just amend G to reflect something else. Just depends on what you want to do. So the other idea was with Class P was to flip-flop that and say 50 percent food, right? And then 50 percent liquor, gaming, and T-shirts, so to speak. So liquor and gaming are forced to be together. The logic in that one is that would then probably reduce the overall ability to say be all about gaming and not about food, because food, no matter what, would be the preeminent percentage, and everything else has to fit opposite food. So that's kind of what we drafted. I can take any questions as to which way you might want to go.
Thank you. I just had to take a step all the way back. Years ago, I believe, this board voted to allow video gaming in Montgomery, or we already did allow it. I forget what the ordinance was at the time. Remember, we had to either take action or do nothing. And so we do allow video gaming in town, obviously. But there's been, there seems to be some, some serious concerns from this board about whether or not we allow simply gaming facilities. And the state law doesn't allow us to regulate gaming kind of, gaming activities, but we do allow it in the village, and they need a liquor license for that. But we can regulate the liquor license. And it, it seemed to me, or at least when we were talking, that this board wasn't, wasn't overwhelmingly in support of having gambling halls in town. And so that's kind of take a step all the way back, why we're looking at this, why we're looking at making a change either to our current Class G or add a Class P. So that's the history.
And based on your discussion before, what you're trying to accomplish, it almost seems like you'd want to take what's in here as Class P and make that the new Class G language, because that would have the food on one side and the everything else on the other side, which I think is what you were trying to do, is put the focus on food. So it almost makes sense to have that be the restaurant license. And then if you feel the need to create another license to have out there, then we can, or we can just amend the G.
So the result would be that we would have restaurants in town that happen to have gaming and not gambling halls that happen to serve some food. At least that would be the intent.
Right. Like I said, with the current restaurants we have, you know, that wouldn't affect them, but our concerns, you'd have somebody come in that just selling a minimal amount of food but wants the gaming, and this would hopefully prevent that.
And we put this on hold a few months ago to wait until the renewals came in for last year, so we can ensure that we don't affect or impact any of our existing Class G holders. Now for questions.
President Brody, so are you, when we were initially discussing this, or when this was initially proposed, we're not looking to separate an establishment that has gaming versus one that doesn't?
No.
Okay.
Mm-mm.
Based on what attorney Anderson just said, I'm, I, I thought we were going to separate, have two separate licenses, one if somebody had gaming, and then another class if they didn't.
The difficulty with that is you don't get to regulate the gaming aspect of it. The best we could come up with was legally was this idea of saying the percentages, how much could play into things. If someone has a liquor license, they have the right to get a gaming license, and we don't issue that, we have nothing to say about it. That goes strictly through the state. So our thought was, because we regulate food versus liquor already, we, and that's been a pretty well-recognized ability to do that, our thought was, why not roll that concept a little further and add to it these other things, particularly gaming? But the idea of saying that there's a class that specifically prohibits gaming, you can't have any sales of gaming, I don't think that, I would recommend against that. I mean, we can draft anything you want. My concern is that I think that might be declared invalid. I think this is a stronger case to make, where you're not outright prohibiting it, because the state has basically told you you can't, but you're at least regulating, but not prohibiting. Does that make sense?
Yes. I have another question, though. So we just went through renewals. What happens with us making either an amendment or setting up a new class? Does this not take effect until the next time they come up for renewal?
You want me to answer that?
Yeah.
You can make changes midstream, and fortunately here, it would be awkward if we thought the percentages would be affected, like suddenly a restaurant that was close was now going to have a problem. Then we might want to look at the, the concept of delaying it one year. But here, where the percentages are so overwhelmingly safe towards food, I really don't think you need to concern yourself with.
And the list that we were given, the spreadsheet, okay, those are the Class G holders right now?
Correct.
And they also have the gaming?
Well, uh...
Two of them do.
Two of them do. Others don't have any gaming, but they could.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. I was misreading that. Okay, so it's not going to have a big impact of us making any type of amendment or setting up a new class?
We don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
And I talked to attorney Anderson about this as well. At the time, you said it's similar to, like, if we were to change the hours that they could sell. You can do that on the spot if you wanted to, which we're not talking about, but you're changing the, the rules under the, under which they govern, not so much the piece of paper that they have.
Okay, thank you.
And I think during the renewal process, they were advised that, we were having conversations about this, weren't they? When the G, I'm pretty sure that they were all...
I know all the new people that have applied, but I believe the renewals were also...
Made aware of pending change.
Would we keep both licenses?
We could, but we don't have to.
Because the new alternate G, we're set with Poor Boys, okay? They do a lot of liquor business, and their food, but with their food and their gaming offsets, I should say, how do I...
I think Poor Boys has a class...
Well, they don't really want that license. They, they took the business over when it was Class G, and the owner's kid at the time had a bunch of young guys, and they decided, I want packaged liquor so I can hand a six-pack to my buddies as they leave. So he sold a lot of six-packs and 24-packs. Well, when John took it over, he goes, I don't want to sell beer after, you know, as end of the night at all. So he has never sold a packaged liquor, but he's paying $500 more because he doesn't understand the food and liquor. Like he said, you can take a bottle, and I'll get 20 shots out of this bottle, so I can make, you know, 40 bucks on this little bottle, and yet this little piece of chicken, volume-wise, it's not the same. And even though he's selling the same amount, say, it just doesn't, it doesn't match up, if you know what I mean. And I can see his point, but he don't want to keep paying $500 more, and he shouldn't have to, because he's, that's his package. It's only, that was the only verbal difference, I think, in the two licenses, right, Jeff?
I have to look, I'm not exactly sure.
I think it is, and...
Isn't it also tied, is it a bar versus a restaurant? So that's, it's the percentage thing, too, because they're...
He has no percentage. He can sell 100 percent liquor if he wanted to.
Yeah, that's, that's the difference, is that he's not a restaurant, per se. He's a, more of a bar. So that's why his percentages aren't there. To get to the G license, he's got to be in the other class.
Well, he's debating whether he is a bar. You know, he sells a lot of food, but the, but if you looked on the, on your receipt at night, you got a lot of liquor there, because the cost of liquor is a lot higher than a piece of chicken, like he said. So that's where the difference is. And I don't know how to, I think he's got a good point. He's a, he is a restaurant, people go there to eat and have a drink with it, but that liquor's going to be more, I don't know.
I mean, I know he didn't submit anything, but, and I heard that he can't make the 50/50, but what, how close is he? Because like we saw, the 50/50 doesn't seem to impact anybody. What my concern is, looking at it from the opposite direction, would be, he's got, he has a different class of license right now that if he wanted to sell to somebody to open up essentially a gambling hall, he could, and they would have the liquor license to operate, and they wouldn't have to serve any food.
Well, he's got three machines in there, whatever it is, and, but he's not going to put it, I think you're only, you only have five, is that correct?
So it's...
So he's not, he's not relying on those machines, but he does get money from the machines, and then that throws it out of whack, too. So I don't know, maybe I just said, maybe he ought to keep paying the high rent and, or the high liquor license, but he feels like he's out there by himself, and he really is.
But I think he's paying the, the $500 more, not because he sells packaged liquor, it's because he's a bar versus a, his food to alcohol ratios are off, so that's why he's in the higher class. It probably has little to do with, the, the packaged liquor's probably just a small piece of having the bar license versus the restaurant license. His percentages just aren't there to be classified as a restaurant.
Possibly.
That's probably...
What is the VFW? What, what do they pay for, is he the, John, is John the highest liquor license we have? Or is the VFW have that high, or...
The fee, or the...
Yeah, the fee.
I know it varies, I don't remember them all off the top of my head. But the VFW's in the A, it's in its own category, too, but I don't remember what their fee is.
You don't remember what the prices are, I guess that's...
They don't carry out liquor at...
No, they don't, but, but see, they're more liquor than food, too.
He has a pretty valuable liquor license right now. I don't think that I've actually, I don't think we've issued one since, since I've been involved, and I don't know that this board probably would issue a bar license, as you've seen. Another thought is, I know that the fee is $500 more, does it have to be? We can certainly adjust the fee if we wanted to, but, because we're not, I don't know. It's the first I'd thought of that, really, but do we need to charge whatever it is? Is it worth $500 more to us for him not to have that and not...
I think the word thing was, the wording in there was, was the packaged liquor, and he goes, I don't do that, so why am I, and I said, good point. And that, at that time, that was the only difference between the liquor license, was the package. But now that we've made it really specific here with the gambling and the food and the liquor, now you're breaking it down real close. I don't think we ever checked in the old days.
One other point is perhaps, and not knowing the exact class we're talking about for this one, it's possible that if he's got the highest class, that's packaged sales plus in restaurant, or in, not restaurant, in bar sales, he could possibly go down without hitting restaurant. In other words, if you're willing to issue one, let's say it's a Class B, I don't know what the, the term is, but the one that isn't packaged sales but is a, a bar, he could have that, maybe that price is closer to what this would be.
Instead of being 500 more, it's 250 more to have the middle tier.
So he can't sell, he can't sell packaged, but he can serve all day long, and there are no percentages in that case.
Yeah, because that, I mean, and I know that just from having been in that business, that food ratio to bar versus restaurant is out there everywhere, and that's, you know, bars just don't generate, because you said, the profit is in the liquor sales, it's not in selling chicken sandwiches.
It is.
There's just not enough profit.
But he sells a lot of food, if you go over there, he's got a lot of people in there.
Well, that's what I was going to say, we've seen our three or four other guys that have a very easy time to hit that, so maybe he, maybe he does, but...
He, I guess he doesn't understand exactly what the figures are either. Like Rosati's, I've been in the Rosati's, and they do a lot of liquor business. They, they must sell a lot of pizzas, though, too, but it's just, I look at the figure, and they're not even close.
We can look into what the, if I can get to what the different fees are for the different license categories, and we can see if there's a different category also that Poor Boys would fit into. I mean, they renewed for this year, so we've got time to figure that one out. We can look, and before they renew next year. And I know they said they want to come in and, and figure out what they can do.
Kind of as it, as it relates to this, and I think trustee Spurling was asking about this, too, does the board feel like we should, you guys feel like we should have a Class P, which is the opposite of this, this one, just so that we have a, a class available, there'll be zero of them, that is the 50/50 as we currently have it? Originally, I thought that we're changing the G, we're, to make it more difficult for somebody to have a gambling hall. But if we had a Class P that was the 50 food, what is it, no, 50 liquor and then 50 everything else, they would have a remedy if they wanted to come in and say, you know, I want a Class P, which would allow them that, and we could then look at it on a, not a case-by-case, but if it's right for that area. That was a long sentence.
Well, and I'm, you lost me, because if they're not going to have gaming, they're 50, the, the new G just is the same thing, it just doesn't have the gaming added to the equation.
Well, no, the gaming would still be part of the equation, it would be on the opposite side.
If they say if they're not going to have gaming...
But if they're not going to have gaming, you're saying, you know, to keep it the way it is now, to keep a 50/50, you don't, almost, you don't need to, because if they don't have the gaming, it is G. If they don't have the gaming, it's, it defaults to exactly what it is now, because the gaming's not a factor.
Because they won't have that...
That wouldn't be added into the equation.
I believe that's correct, because if you look at it, we're saying, in one version, we've got 50 percent food, gaming, the other side liquor, in the other equation, we've got 50 percent food and liquor gaming. If you remove gaming from that equation, it's 50 food, 50 liquor, in both for all.
That's exactly where it's at, right. And like what trust, or attorney Anderson said, we can't really segregate it into two separate categories, because we don't know. If Taco Madre went and put in gaming, we wouldn't be notified, because it's a state-controlled issue. Unless someone happened to go in there and see it, we wouldn't be notified that they put gaming in, because it has, it's not a village issue.
True.
So it becomes awfully hard to enforce and regulate it. So I think you're better off leaving, transferring into the new Class P, and if gaming is there, gaming is there, and it's on the, it's on the liquor food, or on the liquor gaming side, making it a restaurant, to keep it away from becoming gambling hall.
I think we're doing a good job of looking at this in microscopic detail, and I think the reality is that if you have a restaurant, that, and you serve food, and you also do the gaming with the five machines, the likelihood that you're going to hit the, hit our 50/50 is going to be fine. It's, what we're trying to prevent is somebody from serving no food.
Or not a lot of food. Like, in Poor Boys' case, I mean, they, they're a restaurant, but it's a bar that serves food, not Rosati's, that's a restaurant that has a bar.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of a distinction there in, in how those two operate. Gary's is a, is a pizza place that has a bar within it. It's not a bar that happens to serve food as well that has a kitchen.
Chief Myers, you got some?
May I, yes, um, to answer trustee Lee's couple of questions, Poor Boys has Class A, $1,750. If, if they went to a Class G, it'd be $1,250, so that's where he's saving the $500. But since he has the A, he doesn't have to worry about the 50/50 split, he just sells. And it is true that he can sell packaged going out the door, and you're right, the, the original owner and his sons were selling that at 1:00 in the morning, and you would see them all carried out of there. The, the VFW has similar license, but that's for a club, and that's a Class B at 1,500 a year.
Maybe that's the direction, then, is to look at A without packaged goods becoming 1,500, and not allow packaged goods.
I think you have a class for that.
For just packaged goods.
Basically, a bar that doesn't sell packaged. I suspect we do.
Beer and wine, yes.
Oh, I was thinking it would be more than beer and wine, but...
I thought we have a different one, because that's what Island Cafe originally applied for.
That's a C for... I'm sorry, that's a C for $1,000.
But that's beer, beer and wine only.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, no, no grocery stores, Walgreens, so any, any alcohol, beverage.
So maybe the solution is to create a bar that doesn't allow carry, carry-out packaged goods, and that becomes, and it sounds like it would be fair to be comparable to what the VFW is doing. It's just not a club, so it would have to create its own class.
At least he wouldn't be the highest-priced one for, for doing, like, he didn't even have a six-pack in the place. If some guy said, six-pack, you have to get six cans or something, give it to the guy. I mean, that's, it's just, doesn't make sense to me either, and, and I don't want to muddy the waters here, but what, we had somebody come in about a liquor license, this is liquor license, it says, where do we get about the people living upstairs in a bar? Is that another part of the liquor license, or is that...
Yes, sir, it is. There's a regulation on our books that prohibits direct access from the bar upstairs to a private residential area. It's just, it's part of the, it's probably been the law for 50 years.
Oh, it's been leased, yeah. I don't know if we'd want to change something like that either, because that doesn't make real, that like an, an equated law, too, I would think.
That's...
I don't, I don't know, Alice's place, you could go upstairs, but I don't think Shannon's you can. The old Shannon's, they never could go upstairs, you got to go outside and go upstairs.
If it, if it's an outside access, then that rule doesn't apply.
That rule does not apply.
Only if it's interior access from the bar to the, the residential area.
There is access from the inside to the place on the corner here.
Okay.
There's an inside stairway.
Yeah, yeah.
And Alice had her son and niece and nephew, it was always family-related upstairs, because of that law.
That did muddy the water, but I, but I knew they were good, you know, they came in and asked us about it, and the first thing I thought is that under the, our restrictions, they couldn't do it, basically.
Maybe that's something, I would love to talk about that, by the way. Maybe that's something that staff can, can discuss and kind of bring back, if, if that liquor license moves forward for La Esquina, then that's something that maybe we can talk about then, because I, I would like to talk about that. If it's our job or our responsibility to regulate who lives upstairs of a restaurant, if they can get direct access to your bar, and you're okay with that as the bar owner, and you're not willing to put in the money to separate them off, is it our job to regulate that?
When's that going to be back, Dan? Because I don't want to keep stalling people off on, it seems like we table a lot of things and...
I'm sorry, we're, we are looking for direction after tonight, to be able to go calm this week.
Yeah, we figured if you came to decision tonight on new language, we could probably get the language adjusted, bring that back for you to approve on Monday. Once you've approved that, we've got the two-play slash sitco license out there, Island Cafe and La Esquina, they're all waiting for action.
It, it might be useful to know the thinking behind why that law was put in place. I think there is a chain of custody issue. Bars have to account for the volume of liquor that's been decanted, and if someone has access to the facility in off-hours, it's, becomes very complicated to say, why was your consumption of whiskey more than what you reported to the state? Am I on target with that?
I think you're absolutely on target. I don't, I can't speak directly, like, I know the history precisely, but I have every belief based on my experience that it has to do with criminal activity, not just the illegal consumption or sale or theft, but also the, the sort of activities that happen that are related to alcohol, but not, not, let's say, exactly the same, but that are criminal, criminal activities related to consumption.
I, I think my point would be, while it's tempting to change a law based on a particular circumstance, I wouldn't do that without knowing for sure why that law was put in place, and if it's something long-term that we really want to live with.
Oh, I had not thought about it that way at all, and that makes, that's, makes a heck of a lot of sense of why we have something like that.
Sorry to muddy the water, I didn't know we were down the road. We could do this later, I, I just, never mind.
No, but based on that, I, it makes complete sense that you, that you would want somebody related only, a way they can make use of it upstairs without having to do an addition or figure it out. But if non-related people can live upstairs of a bar, I was thinking after-hours, but think during hours.
I don't think we'll ever have that situation ever again, except for those two buildings. Nobody's going to live on top of Poor Boys or Rosati's, so...
It could happen with Gray's Mill, if we're lucky enough to bring that back to life.
It could be, yeah. There could be a lot of apartments upstairs there.
Might help make that building, hate to use the word profitable, but...
All right, sorry, brought it up, let's go with this.
Do we have somebody that might be able to shed light historically on, you know, obviously staff can research when it was done, and I don't know if the records are accurate to the thought process. I know we're pretty good about, when we talk about something, about that our intent is this, so future boards can reference back to what our intent was.
What I'd suggest on that is, this isn't unique to Montgomery. This is a pretty standardized provision, so what we can do, if you, if you'd like, is just contact the Illinois Liquor Control Commission. They probably have a good idea of, of the history.
Why it's there.
And find out in fairly short order for you and report back, if you wish.
I would like that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we just cleared up the water a little bit.
Yep.
So the second unrelated matter was the fees for Poor Boys, if, and staff will look into that, see if there's another option, because I think, I wanted to make this point, that if somebody wants to give away their right to sell packaged liquor... Because I think, I wanted to make this point, that if somebody wants to give away their right to sell packaged liquors at 1:00 in the morning when somebody's leaving their bar, I think I'm in favor of that.
And I'm in favor of giving them the $250 to stop it from happening.
And one of my thoughts was, if he's the only guy with a Class A, then maybe our Class A doesn't allow that anymore. We don't allow that in Montgomery to sell
Packaged liquor.
Packaged liquor at a bar.
Right.
So he can drink all night and then take some to go. But I guess if we don't have to talk about this again, are there any, that's something that maybe we should think about a little more before we act on that. You guys look into that?
Yeah, we'll look into that. We've got time on that one.
Just when I thought I really understood the distinction between alternate Class G and P, now it's gotten away from me again. I, I think it would be helpful if we could settle on one or the other, maybe.
Well, there's a big difference between the two, right? One, G, G alternate has the gaming as part of the liquor. And so that's alternate G has the 50%, includes gaming with liquor. And in P, the gaming falls underneath the food 50%.
Inverse right now?
No.
You've got it backwards?
The way they're listed on the memo, that they're the opposite. But those are the two differences. It's which side the gaming falls on, with the food or with the alcohol and everything else.
The alternate G, the gaming would fall with the alcohol?
That's what I would propose. It's not the way it's listed here, but that's the way I think we would write it up.
It would be better for you to step away from the letters and just say, "Do you want gaming to fall with liquor, or do you want gaming to fall with food?"
Liquor for me, which, whether that's P or G.
And that's more restrictive, so I think that is what you're describing.
And my thinking is that, I think the community maybe is better served by having more good-quality restaurants or more food venues that happen to have an adjunct to their business that maybe would make them more profitable.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. I think, as it's written, Class P, which is 50, food, and then everything else is on the other side, I like that. I think that's what we, that's what people have expressed to me, that we need restaurants. I haven't heard so much that we need bars or gambling halls. But I agree, if it makes them more profitable to have that as a secondary use, that's great. What's up?
Nothing, go ahead.
It sounds like there's two or three people that are in favor of, as it's written there, Class P, which is 50% food, 50% of the venues.
I would be in favor of that as well.
Okay.
It's fine, me too.
All right.
That's the case, and we would look to bring that to you on Monday to adopt that. Then, if it please the board, then after you've adopted that at the meeting, can we bring the other liquor licenses to you that are outstanding currently? Which I said is two-play, Island Cafe, and La Esquina. Now that we would have the new language set, that you could act on those however you choose to. Are you, are we good with that? Okay. And we will plan on putting that all on Monday's agenda.
Okay. Thank you. All right, move on to increased fines for ordinance violations. I don't think staff had anything specific prepared for this.
No, this came up at a meeting I was unable to attend. But Rich took notes, and I talked to some of you that is, something Trustee Youngerman had asked to be brought back at a future meeting. And so we thought this would be a good time to bring it back.
Thought so. It's a great time to bring it back.
Yeah.
If you guys have...
We're all willing to talk about it, and he's not here.
I'm right, exactly. If you guys want to talk about it tonight, we can, or we can hold off and talk about it on Monday, assuming that he's here.
Well, Tom, we talked about it, and he missed it, sorry.
And we could certainly do that, because four of us said that we wanted to discuss it. He doesn't have to be here for that to happen.
I think we should wait for him. He had...
It was his hot button.
Yeah, he had some specific thoughts on things, so I would say wait for him.
All right, we will move that to a future agenda.
All right, we'll move on to the employee manual. And I'll ask Jeff to summarize this one.
Thank you. Bringing this back again, you know, we had one question about wanting to know all of the changes that were made. So Justin did provide a summary at the front that showed every section where we made changes, whether it was legal language or what we changed, to have you look at. And then I also received a question, wanting to know the involvement of the department heads in the process. And so I explained to that trustee, I explained to all of you that Megan and Justin brought the employee manual to a staff meeting and shared it with everybody, walked through the changes. Then they were asked to take some time to review it on their own and submit any questions or concerns they had, which, which one of them took advantage of that and submitted. And then I talked to all the department heads and let them know that I'd gotten that question. And so they are, you know, prepared to answer any questions you may have of them also tonight. So with that, we would answer any questions you have about the manual, if you have questions about the process. And then at the end, we would just look to see if there is, after tonight, if there's still more you want to discuss, or if it'll be in a place where we can bring it to you to approve. And with that, we will open it up to your questions.
Or if there are none.
I think I'd like to go all the way back to the beginning. What was the sensibility that triggered the perceived need to do this? What problem are we solving?
We try and review it, well, we used to review it every year and make updates where we needed. We hadn't reviewed it in a while, and so it was just a project that Finance and HR took on to update. I mean, a lot of it was our, you know, there are laws that have changed or new laws that apply to us to add in there. Some of our policies and procedures were a little vague, that we tried to tighten up the language, add some things in, try to combine two or three manuals into one, so instead of, so have one place to go to. Because we used to have administrative policies, and we brought, we pulled those into this, some of the other things. So that's kind of the thinking behind it.
Board policies fell in as well.
And Trustee Marisak pointed out that some of the forms that are applicable to these activities are now incorporated into the book, so it's more of a complete package.
Yeah, we're trying to make it more comprehensive and, like I said, updated and tighten up some of the language at the same time.
In reading this, and when I say reading it, I mean, your eyes are bleeding from reading this for the third time.
What we're shooting for.
Yeah, exactly. Got stock in Visine. There's a lot of detail. There's a ton of detail in here, which is probably good from where we're sitting, because it does help with, I'm certain, the more language that's here, the tighter this is. It leaves less gray area for litigation, and at least there's a really sound basis. Gray area tends to cause problems. So I think that some of that detail, which has added some length to it, but I think some of the length was also adding the three different documents and the forms to this. But there's a lot of detail involved here. I know I had asked about travel expenses. I didn't mean it for it to be three pages, but it is. And it eliminates a lot of gray area. So it's, I think it's good, that it's, it is a little lengthy, but it's a good reference guide. I wouldn't expect anybody to read this and know it by the back of their hand, but it is a good reference tool.
It tries to help us ensure that we're treating all our employees, you know, fairly and equally. It's not, "Well, I like this employee, and the language is vague, so I can do this here, but I don't like you as much." We can go, you know. Try to set it out so that it's there for everybody. They know what the expectations are, they know what the rules are.
I think Doug said it in the beginning, though. When we hire a public works guy, is he gonna take this and go, "I'm gonna read this page to page"? No. But at least he has a reference to it, but it gets involved. In fact, I guess because it's also a handbook, it's also a lot of other things. But at the same time, I showed it, or I mentioned it to a lot of human resource people, I mean, from big companies like Phillips Oil from New Mexico, a girl that I know there. And everybody's at 50 pages. And here we are, over double that, and I'm going. And the first thing all of them said is, "You sure Consul's seen this? I know you're saying you ticked out the gray area, but it seems like a lot of the human resource managers, they don't want to get too specific, because that's when you can get sued." So they right away, every one of them said, "You sure your Consul's seen this?" I go, "Oh, yeah, okay." I mean, that's what they were worried about, it seemed like. I don't know, maybe they work, these big companies, lawyers, just right over their shoulders or something, I don't know. But it just seemed like we got an awful big book here. But it's, it's a handbook, it's, and I don't want to beat it to death. As long as we got some of the little stuff out of there that I didn't like, it looks good to me, I don't care.
How many pages was the old manual?
The old, the old manual was 58 pages. The new manual, this is redline version that the board has in their packets. The new manual, with all the redline taken out, is 94 pages.
But it's three, it's, it's three different documents now, rolled into one, plus the forms?
Essentially, yes, yes.
Okay, so it's not as bad as it looks?
No.
Is the same document for both exempt and non-exempt employees?
This document covers all employees, exempt, non-exempt, part-time, full-time, covers everyone.
So it does replace that distinction then too? We used to have separate booklet.
There's different language?
The two union contracts will supersede this.
We don't have a separate personnel policy for...
And it references that in here?
We have personnel policy and then
And then the contract.
...employment contracts that may add or override.
I can say that this is substantially thicker document than the County of Kane hands its employees as well, having suffered through that myself as well. Is it the intention that we would revisit this on an annual basis?
I think that's what we try and look at every year, every year, to look at, you know, like I say, we always look for if there are things we need to tweak that we found out maybe aren't working, or new laws, or, so we usually do look to update it.
Maybe two more questions. I think Trustee Lee made a good comment. I don't know if we've officially asked for legal review of what we're about to vote on.
You have, I mean, not you, the board, but certainly your staff has asked us to review it. We were involved after the first draft came out. Now, understand, our review is not about the substance of it. It's whether or not there are any laws that need to be updated or any procedural changes that need to be made. And we did add, add some of those things, so we probably are responsible for a few pages worth of growth ourself. But that has everything to do with the law, nothing to do with, it's not a choice, it was things that should be added. So that, that's our involvement in it. But we have reviewed it, and we do believe that it is appropriate. We have no comment on the substance. That's up to you to decide whether you like the number of days off for the policies. But we have reviewed it, and I would caution you not to worry too much about page numbering. You know, it's an appropriate policy. It's enforceable, it's clear, and we're not concerned about it from a liability standpoint at all.
Okay.
Just to clarify, because I know the page count is really getting hammered. So it's 36 pages longer than the previous document. And I just counted 14 pages of appendices and forms at the back of this that wouldn't have been in the previous document. So we're 22 pages longer. But we added the policies, the board policies and administrative policies to it, along with the new drug policy. So I don't think it's necessarily that much longer than the old one, considering that it's condensed. We could probably get this down to seven-point type. Get it, get it on 40 pages. You know, because again, and it's, it's pretty detailed. I mean, it really covers every, there's a lot of references to the police contract and public works contract where this section defaults to public works, defaults to the police contract, so...
Director Poobens, can, I didn't quite hear what you said. There's an, there's obviously the contract, and then there's a personnel. What was your last comment? I miss what you said.
We formerly had a, I'll call it personnel manual.
Okay.
Or HR, I mean, I don't recall the exact title of the previous document. The comment was that there was questioning, was there a separate manual for exempt and a separate manual for non-exempt? My comment was, no, there's one HR manual, but then there are two labor contracts, police and public works, that may supersede, override, add to what's in the village-wide manual.
Okay, thank you.
Did I clarify there?
You did, yes, thank you. I would just add the comment that I appreciate the work that went into this, because I know we pushed back quite a few times when we talked about this. And I appreciate that the department heads took a look at it as well, and everyone really worked on it. So I know it was a lot of work, and we kind of made you jump through some hoops with it too. So I do appreciate the time you put into it.
I'd like to echo that too. I know it probably seems like we sifted the sand pretty fine here, but I think where we're all coming from is we very much value the employee workforce that we have, and we want to treat them fairly and respectfully, and we want them to stay with us. So to throw a new set of rules at them is something that we didn't take lightly.
Awesome. All right. We'll move forward with that. I would want to say for all of these, for next week, any action item, we'll put on items for separate action, because Trustee Youngerman's not here, so if you do bring that next week, that's where it'll go.
All right.
And move on to department updates.
Chief Myers?
Thank you, good evening. We started this month at Krug and Nicholson. Officer Johnson and Officer Gonzalez is teaching Too Good for Drugs once a week at both elementary schools. So we're started again this year. Sergeant Sullivan is in his eighth week of a 10-week Northwestern University Staff and Command class, so he'll be graduating here next month. I will put that in, I'll send an email if you're interested in attending that graduation. Thank you.
All right, Director Poobens?
You may have seen on Route 31, IDOT has put out some message board notifying drivers of lane changes that are pending. I spoke with IDOT. They still actually have some work to do on the Watkins Crossing before that can happen. Their intent has been that once the crossing was completed, they would open the ramps and Watkins Street. But deconstruction saw some signalheads to put up, and then some temporary striping. And then there has to be a meeting between IDOT and the ICC and the Burlington to all review the improvements and approve it. So it'll be a little bit of time yet before you see that crossing opened. In conjunction with that, IDOT is more of a perfunctory item, but IDOT has requested a extension from the ICC on the project completion date to June 30th of 2015. Again, it's, again, it has to be done, the project's not done, it's not open, but the ICC has some authority over that because of the crossing. So they're targeting now June 30th as their new completion date.
Real quick, will we be, will representatives from the Village of Montgomery be at that meeting with BNSF, ICC, and IDOT?
We, I don't believe we have any authority to approve or deny it. I think, based on our relationship with IDOT, they would not object. I mean, I've spoken to the resident engineer, he seems pretty open to it.
Just curious.
I mean, I think it'll primarily be to make sure the signals are working properly, that they're spaced right, the geometrics of it, you know. And so far as village concerns on the crossing itself, I think Engineer Wallers and I have taken great pains to go through a lot of that already in the, in the design phase. But, answer your question, yeah, I don't think they will mind if we're part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Director Van Vorn?
Finance, right now, one, our main thing that we're working on right now is the budget. We have received information from the departments, and I'm compiling all of that information right now. So other than that, there's not anything that I would update the board on.
Director Young?
Thank you. Couple items. Niners will be back before the Village Board next Monday night for final approval for their special use. And as far as I know, they intend to move forward with closing in February. Michael's Corporation, which we've talked about previously in some weekly notes, was tabled, as most of you know, at the Plant Commission in January. It will come back on February 5th. We believe that that will move forward to the Village Board then on February 9th. It will be imperative for the board to try to take action that night, if possible, because of their tight timeframe to get into the facility. because of their tight timeframe to get into the facility, do some restoration to the office space and then set themselves up for transfer of equipment to the building itself and then later in the spring to the storage yard. You might recall that they're consolidating three locations in Northern Illinois to hopefully this location. So if at all possible, we'd like to ask that you take action on this item on February 9th. And I'll keep the board posted on any details in the weekly notes between now and then. O'Reilly's Auto Parts is still under construction. They've been hit hard by the weather earlier in the winter, but they're moving forward. And just this week, White Eagle Auto Body started to clear their lot on 31, so they will be coming in in the spring with their building permit as well. As a four-unit building at Ogden Hill that we've talked about previously, that will be coming in with inland submitting some site plans recently and building plans to come. So there's a lot of good commercial activity going on and I think that's encouraging. Thank you.
Just had one comment on the Michael's facility. If you could just make sure to work with the plant commission before that meeting so that they have all the information that they need in order to take a vote that evening and as well as this board too, just so the board prepared.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, is there any new or unfinished business to come before the board?
I have one thing. At our ME-DC meeting today, one of the, of the business people brought up about naming Orchard Road our, our section here that's in Montgomery after Jesse. He definitely was a, a major role in getting that to Fort Lane. I mean, without him, we wouldn't have got it, let's put it that way. And we're gonna miss him because he helped us with Douglas, he helped us with Douglas Road, he helped us with Montgomery Road. And the biggest part is he finally, with him and Linda McConaughey, finally put the pressure to finally put some money in the south end of King County. And they have named other sections after people. And it would be nice if, if as a village, we could kind of support that with, go to King County and say, could we put up just a sign saying that that part of the high, that part of the roadway be named after Jesse, who really did everything to put it there? And he is a Montgomery resident, which I don't think our next probably board member will come from Montgomery. So he, he really did a lot for us.
Yeah, I completely agree with you. On the Orchard Road, that was actually right when I first started getting involved with the EDC business climate and his help in getting that widened was amazing. So I don't think that there's any objection to that. If that's something that the county, because it's a county highway, if that's something that they've done in the past, I would certainly support.
It's their, it's their highway, but at the same time, it's our section. And Chicago, you see it all the time, they just plop up a sign and, and just a neighborhood where this, I think, would really be a great tribute to him.
Okay.
It's a great idea, trustee Lee.
Hearing no other items, move on to executive session. We have three reasons, three items this evening in there. Discuss the employment of an employee pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C1. Discuss the minutes per 5ILCS 120 over 2C21. And then also, we're gonna add to discuss litigation where the Village of Montgomery finds that such action is probable or imminent pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C11. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Lee, seconded by trustee Marisak, call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
And trustee Spurling?
Excellent.